Testimonial oath, please be advised if you are here to present today before Commissioner's Court, you are under oath. 1.5 Public comments.
Okay.
No public comments. 1.6.
Judge, on Thursday, we were receiving the truck that we got in the brand. Did we deliver it to the fire station or what?
1.6 Approval of Minutes of Special Meeting, August 16th, 2024. Regular meeting, August 19th, 2024.
Motion to approve. Subject to corrections.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Subject to approve without corrections.
I'll check another one.
I have a second by Commissioner Odena. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.1 Approval of Bonds.
No bonds.
No bonds, no action. 3.1 Discussion and Appropriate Action. Approval for reimbursement for the 365th Clerk Melissa Garcia to attend the 2024 Annual Roca Conference, September 3rd through the 6th in San Antonio, Texas. It's to reimburse her.
Mm-hmm.
You have a motion by Commissioner De Wukawa.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? 3.2 Discussion and Appropriate Action. Approval of Redemption of Stroke Off Property ID 15669.
Good morning, Judge. Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
So, this item was on the last Commissioner's Court meeting that we had for you all. Basically, the instruction from the court was to go back to the previous owner, Mrs. Castillo, and to coordinate with her to see if she would be, what terms she would be amenable towards in terms of a payment contract. We were not successful in getting really communication back from her to coalesce on the number. So, there are a number of options available. I don't know if those options will want to be explored in closed executive session, but there are a variety of options. I can discuss them here or in closed session as needed. I can just generally tell you what all the options would be.
You can tell us generally, Mr.?
Okay. So, of course, you know, at this point in time, the property is no longer in our name. So, the option would be, we're within a year of the sale. We could void the sale. If we void the sale, the potential would be is to coordinate with her to get her onto a payment contract, but then also have her fill out all of her exemption forms, have her file her homestead exemption for over 65, and then put her in a position where she can process a referral at the date. The other option would be to post this for a public resale, which at that point in time, then we would have it at the courthouse steps. Highest bidder takes it. If she wants to bid on it, she can bid on it, too. If somebody else becomes owner of the property, she can coordinate with them, or that new person might have Victor go there from there. The last option would be just to continue as is. I don't think that'd be the best option, because at this point in time, it's struck off. It's in county trust name, so there's no, you know, accruing taxes basically from here forward on it. So, this was sold back earlier this year in April, so this is prime time to, y'all have basically all the options available to you at this time.
Questions?
Mr. Arce, what's the total amount that is due on this property?
On this one, I don't have it down right now. The system was down. It's been down since Friday, so I don't have the current amounts that are due for it. If recollection serves, the amounts that are due for the respective property, I think we convened on it last time. I don't have the notes on that, so I can't give you an exact amount right now.
Is this the person that owns the property?
Mrs. Castillo.
Yeah.
Previously owned the property. Yes.
This is the one here, isn't it?
Yeah, so the idea with this one is, again, you know, to try to get her onto a payment contract so that, you know, we could max it out. The most we could max it out per law would be three years, and just have her pay it off during that interim period of time. You know, there's no private resale bid for me to tell you, and then...
So, right now, she's not paying the taxes either, right?
She was sporadically making payments. She would make $100 or $200 payment every couple of months.
So, my recommendation would be to put it on public sale? And if that fails, then we'll go a different route?
I have a motion on the floor to put it on the public sale. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Further discussion? All in favor?
Just for clarification, it'd be a public sale for the full minimum bid amount to satisfy all the amounts for all the entities.
Corrects. Correct.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.3 Discussion and Appropriate Action. Approval of Private Resale Property Account Number 16457.
So, this one was another item that was previously placed. The highest bidder did not, the bidder that submitted their bid basically reneged. So, Commissioner Carmona had, at the meeting, expressed potential interest because of its locale for the county to potentially purchase this, since it was right off the highway. There were two that were right off the highway, and you were looking at potential storage facilities for it. So, the thought process there was, you know, we've gone, at this point, they've reneged, their bid is out, so I would say that at this point in time, let's go ahead and officially reject the bid. I mean, they've reneged on it. And then, we can explore how the county can go about acquiring the property, and we can advise and provide all the information that's due for that. The county, of course, can enter into negotiations with the other entities for those amounts.
Mr. Arce, for the record, can you express which Commissioner?
Can you clarify?
Yes. For the record, that was Commissioner Juan Carmona.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We can put this back to for resale, right?
Absolutely.
I'm going to recommend to put it back for resale. I have a second by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.4 Discussion and Appropriate Action. Approval of Private Sale Property Account Number 13917.
Yeah, so this is the same scenario. You know, at this point in time, let's see here. So, this one, do you all have before you, so we received a packet here. So, there was a bid received. This property was a 2012 lawsuit, this is lot 12 block 17, Vivian Heights Edition, City of Carrizo. The adjudged value currently, or the value on the rule for 2023, was $3,519. It was a sheriff's sale back in 2021. Redemption period at this point has expired. A bid was received and approved by the school district for this particular one, actually, and the bid is for slightly above the adjudged value at the $3,600 amount. So, what this would basically do is, because this amount, the $3,600, is slightly above the current adjudged value, the entities aren't in a position to go ahead, and the recommendation would be to accept the bid, especially since the other, the school district has approved it. At this point in time, because however, there are amounts, the total that was due under the judgment was a little over $12,000 for this one. They want county, of course, recommendation on it. I kind of agree that at this point in time, this one is prime for recommendation, given that, again, obviously, the values have gone down since, you know, improvements and whatnot were taken off. The value has gone down, so the taxes really are kind of ballooned to a time period when there was more value on the property. So, it's out of alignment. This is going to get at least, you know, a portion of the property taxes taken care of. The only thing that we noticed in the breakdown, kind of reviewing what we received from Mr. Cabeo's office, this doesn't include a commission for the sheriff, and so my only stipulation would be to approve it, but with the stipulation that the sheriff's commission is included as, you all kind of promulgate every October, right? They'll set the rates for what the commissions and the fees will be out of the sheriff's office. That component was missing here, so...
So, the $3,600, Mr. Arce said, that will suffice all the entities, or you're saying that it's not?
It's not. It's not, because what's due is a little over $12,000 under the judgment. So, everybody's going to take a significant haircut, with, of course, the school district losing out on the most. What happens in those situations is prorated in any case, so that's kind of just how the tax code is, kind of weighed these circumstances to say, hey, well, at least everybody's going to lose out at a prorated amount based off of what they had in the judgment originally. So, the county is looking at...
14.91%.
Being prorated towards it.
The $3,600.
So, the other option would be to reject it and to post it for public resale.
So, essentially, the county would get $254.
Correct.
And 96 cents. I would say my recommendation is to reject it and put it back on a public sale.
Okay.
Commissioner Juan Carmona's open?
I have a motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
I notify Mr. Cabeo's office.
Thank you. 3.5 Discussion and Appropriate Action. Approval of Private Resale Property Account Number 16451.
All right, so this one is the one that's similar to the 16457. Just got my numbers crossed. So, this is also the same situation where Commissioner Juan Carmona mentioned that the county may be interested in the property. It's situated right there off the highway, so we reached out to the bidder, notifying them that the county was potentially interested. Please provide your highest, best offer. Crickets, so we informed them that their offer is rejected. Just wanted to close the loop officially with the county so that we can officially reject their bid and have it such that the county wants to proceed with negotiations with the other entities to go ahead and proceed.
Is the other one, a different one, one on Walker Street?
I think, I think the way the addresses were, yeah, they're right next to each other.
But this one says Catarina, Walker, and Carrizo. I'm just trying to figure out what backup goes with what backup.
So, see right here in the center?
But I'm talking about the papers behind it.
Oh.
That's for a different one.
Yes, yeah, that's a different one.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, that was, that was the last one.
That last one, that's the right one.
Yes, Judge.
Thank you. Questions? I just have this. Yeah, this is all I have. I don't have all of them. Can I see that, Commissioner? Can I see that? I don't have that. See, because that other one that you have goes with this other one separately. I mean, what, yeah, it's all... My administrative assistant is telling me that you guys didn't send all the backup. That's why we don't have all of it.
Okay.
She just made copies from what was submitted, which is this one.
So, the recommendation would be essentially to table it for this one, just because we didn't get what we needed, and the county's interested in purchasing the property, so there's no bid to accept at this point in time. So, that would be the in line with the recommendation.
She said she just made copies from last time.
Yeah, it's just to apprise the court that we went, we spoke, no response, so tabled, you know, basically just table it.
And a motion to table, Mr. Garcia, do I have a second?
Okay.
Second by Commissioner De Wukawa. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. 3.6 Discussion and Appropriate Action. Approval of Private Resale Property Account Number 12753.
Yes, Judge.
I don't know if you have it or not.
This is property count 12753. Judgment was taken back in 2010. Judge value was $2,880. Sheriff's sale was conducted in 2017. Currently, the value of 2023 certified was $3,809. The bid here today was $3,900, so this is a little bit above, again, what the certified value was for 2023. For the county, the county would be looking at the prorated share, it's a little over 23%, 23.01%, which accounts to 664.85 that they would be getting out of the $1,117.19 in the judgment. So, as you can see there, getting a little bit over 50% of ultimately. What was due to it, the recommendation would be to accept. It has been accepted by the school district. It is in line, it is higher than what, right now, CAD is saying the market value for the property is. So, they are paying a little bit over what CAD is saying the property's worth, but I understand that there are amounts that the county, of course, is at this point in time potentially accepting to write off. So, if the county would like to, I can go ahead, either they want to accept the bid, accept the bid, or if not, to recommend that, coordinate with Mr. Cabeo's office to get a public resale for this property.
Is there any conflict? I'm sorry, Judge.
Go ahead.
Is there any conflict between the city and the county with the Boeheim Group, or this is a letter from James, from Mr. Cabeo, so you all got together and discussed it among yourselves?
He provided over the documentation confirming that they went ahead and processed it. There's no conflict. You know, all the entities have to look at ultimately what's going to be in their best interests. What I can tell you is that in circumstances where the bid amount is higher than what the adjudged value, or the certified current value of the property is, that there are instances when the bid is accepted that it can wipe out not only the taxes that were in the judgment, but the post-judgment taxes as well, because the idea is, is that, well, in theory, if CAD has to correct market value for the property, no one in their right mind is going to pay over what CAD is saying the market value is just to satisfy taxes. So, that's why the code says, okay, in these circumstances, then what we're saying is if somebody's at least willing to match what that value is, we can clear everything out, and that will take care of not only what was adjudicated, but this is the rare circumstance where it would also allow for the post-judgment years to be taken care of. Mr. Cabeo has not relayed over that he's utilizing that subsection of 3405. There's a very specific subsection of 3405 that is very rarely used. So, at this point in time, my understanding is he's relayed over this recommendation and have received approval by his client to satisfy the amounts that were in the judgment, but that any of the post-judgment years, which would have been the years after 2010 and through 2017, because once they had the sale in February after 2017, 18 forward, it was struck off and exempt status, that those years would have to be get paid out separate. So, they're paying the $3,600 plus, they're making you whole 100% for those years.
So, when that statement was here, I think you answered some questions, too. Are you okay with that, and what you're thinking?
It's just we never received any of the documentation. Yeah, it was, we had to obtain it from your packet previously, but it was never forwarded to our office to coordinate. We spoke to him about it.
Pretty much, there was no coordination between Mr. Cabeo and...
Right, and so we spoke with him outside, and he said that y'all have the documentation, so we obtained that from Judge Ponce's office.
Other questions? I'm going to make the motion to accept the bid as received at $3,900. Motion. Motion by Commissioner, second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Arce.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Commissioners, including both Carmonas.
Thank you. 3.7 Discussion and Appropriate Action. Monthly Report from County Extension Agent, Ms. Alyssa Gruz, for the month of August 2024.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Good morning.
Attached to my report, I also included a little info sheet of the Dimmitt County 4-H program and what we have offered. Enrollment is open, and it's open all year long for those interested in enrolling into the program. And I also attached the multi-county water rail screening that we host twice a year. That'll be held October 9th. Collections must be dropped off at our office from 8 to 9, and then we'll have results the next day in the afternoon.
Any questions of Ms. Gruz? I have a motion by Commissioner De Wukawa. I have a second by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Any further discussion?
Judge, I wanted to, if I may, thank Ms. Gruz for her job in, and she said, well, for their welcome back to the program they had before the 4-H, yes, it was really good. I think a lot of people are showing more interest in the program.
Yes, for our 4-H kickoff event, thank you, Commissioner. We had over 90 attendees, so that's great. Hopefully, our program from now on will continue to grow from here, here on out.
Other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Gruz. 3.8 Discussion and Appropriate Action. Monthly Report from FCH Agent, Ms. Guti, someone else for the month of August 2024.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioner.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.9 Discussion and Appropriate Action. Approval for FCH Agent, Ms. Guti, someone else to attend the 2024 Fall Faculty Conference on September 24th through the 26th in West Echo, Texas.
I do have a correction on my travel request. I just included the registration fee, and the receipt is in the back.
Do you have that? Do you have the original, Guti?
Yes.
The original of this, so we can give it to you.
Yeah, I have it.
I have a motion by Commissioner De Wukawa.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Munoz. 3.10 Discussion and Appropriate Action. Monthly Report from Rodeo Arena Event Coordinator, Ms. Jasmine Donhead for the month of August 2024. There are no questions, I entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner De Wukawa.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Juan Carmona.
First.
Discussion.
Judge, I know that we have rain and we're blessed to have it, but I just got a report of some of the crates going up pretty high, and you should, the place where we have our problems, it's over here on Midway, and all those areas where people always get stuck, so all would be enough for all the works to take.
For the...
Because all the crates are for plugging and big holes, y'all are seeing...
No, I know, but for the rodeo arena coordinator?
Yes, ma'am.
What are you asking? For us to...
Well, what we do in case they call us, that they're giving plugging or...
You mean so that we can provide shelter? Or what do you...
Will we provide shelter, or will we go and check it out, like, less than we had it, we had to provide some shelter for some...
We can do that. We can do that.
Right now, I think the only one that's close is Hating Free Side, where Catarina, the water's going over, you know, we had a couple of those, but I haven't really... We had a couple of them, but I haven't really seen them. Maybe later on.
Other discussion regarding the rodeo arena event coordinator? There's a motion already by Commissioner. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Carmona. 3.11, Discussion on Appropriate Action Monthly Report from Constable Precinct 2, Mr. Andres Arabula and Jolie Rivera for the month of August 2024.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners.
Good morning.
Should be two pages.
Questions of Constable, Constable Arabula? Motion by Commissioner De Lucavas.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Constable.
Thank you.
3.12, Discussion on Appropriate Action Monthly Report from Constable Precinct 3, Mr. Robert Valderas Clementino Torres for the month of August 2024.
Morning, Judge.
Morning. Questions of Constable Valderas?
Mr. Valderas, the deputy constable, you can be called?
No.
No. No, but I just wanted to see if he could control that area for the recreational.
Yes.
There's been some.
There's been? No, no. We'll check in with the person. You have a worker that's inside there as well? You have a worker that works there at night?
Yeah.
Pedro's?
No. It's Rocha. She's the one. She's a lady, so that's why I'm concerned.
Yeah. No, I'm a top agent.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner De Lucavas. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Constable. 3.13, I don't see Constable Castañeda here, so I'm going to motion to table. Second by Commissioner De Lucavas. Any further discussion? All in favor, table?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.14, Discussion on Appropriate Action Monthly Report from Constable Precinct 4, Mr. Jose Garván for the month of August 2024.
Morning, Judge.
Morning, Constable. Questions of Constable? Carmona?
Motion to table.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Who's second? Second by Commissioner De Lucavas. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Constable. 3.15, Discussion on Appropriate Action Monthly Report from Dimmitt County Golf Course for the month of August 2024. Morning, Ms. Hyman. You don't have the report?
It's in the back.
It's in the back of the... Yours is right here, Commissioner, in front of you. I guess Mirta didn't like you this week, Commissioner De Lucavas, because you don't have any of the backups. But we all have them. She, Ms. Hyman, you found it? Questions of the Golf Course Report? I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Second by Commissioner De Lucavas. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.16, Approval of Golf Course Contract for Rizo Springs CISD and Crystal City CISD for 2024-2025. These were an item that was put back on the agenda, as you can recall, they were tabled the last time because Ms. Hyman wasn't here. So if y'all have any questions, of Ms. Hyman.
Judge, is there any change to the contract of the previous year?
No, just a date. It got tabled last time because she wasn't here to answer questions. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner De Lucavas. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Hyman. 3.17, I'm going to motion to table. I have a second by Commissioner Uranda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.18, Discussion on Appropriate Action Approval for County Attorney Investigator Gazan Gonzalez to attend the Texas District Association Criminal Civil Law update September 17th through the 20th in Galveston, Texas. Are there any questions? Motion by Commissioner De Lucavas.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda.
Is he getting paid by the 22, right?
Correct. That's correct.
Okay. Do we still provide insurance for him and everything else?
Yes.
There's no way we can get it from the rent?
No.
Okay.
You know, sometimes I'm told I can't be heard, so I'm sorry that it seems like I'm yelling. I'm just being as short as possible, I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you.
3.1, Discussion on Appropriate Action Approval to Purchase a Dusan Pneumatic Tire Forklift through the Byboard Precinct 2.
Judge, this is for the replacement that we have. I'm sorry. Same way you would like this. Dusan? Huh? Who's it? Judge, this is for the replacement of the one we have at the commodity building that's an old 1948s forklift, so we're going to replace it to use wherever needed, not only just for the commodity. If anyone needs it, use it. But that's your byboard.
Any questions?
There's one, there's one, but they need therefore higher than, that's why you're doing it.
Any questions?
Motion.
You had a question, Commissioner?
No.
Motion by Commissioner Uranda.
Second.
Second by Commissioner De Lucavas. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.20, Discussion on Appropriate Action Approval to Purchase a Pressure Washer for the Dimmitt County Nanfield Precinct 4.
Judge, it's a hot seat pressure washer. It has the little timer that is included, so you move it and it's the...
There was a picture, or you only have that picture? Because I don't have a picture.
We've put it in measures for four times, so I guess.
It didn't go in the... I don't have it. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jose Uranda. Yes, ma'am.
You see, it's for the last ones.
Oh, that's the trailer you're talking about?
It's got a steamer on it, right?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.21, Discussion on Appropriate Action Approval to Transfer Employee from Precinct 3 to Precinct 4 with current budget pay rate 2324 effective September 10, 2024. I have a question. You're trying to move somebody, take somebody from him?
Yes, when I spoke to you, my resident, he said it was allowable. It's one of the employees.
So, well, of course not, but my question to you is, so you're going to take that position from him? You have a position available? So, because then he loses a position.
Position available, the only thing is the funding.
So what essentially will occur, if I will refresh your recollection, remember when we had that situation with Delma that y'all had questioned? I had to give my position to Mr. Garcia. So my question to you is, is you have an open position?
I have an open position, but the pay.
Okay, but you'll transfer it to him? Because if he gives you, if he gives you that employee...
That's what I was...
You're giving away your position. You're giving it to her. Yes, you are. Yes, there you are, because you're giving it to her. You're transferring it to her. So that's why I'm saying if she has a, if she has a vacant, if she has a vacant position, she can give you her position to you, but it's going to be at the pay rate that she has it, which is the base rate.
I understand that, if she's going to, I lost, he loses the...
But you lose that position.
Yeah.
Her position will come to you if she has a vacant position. Correct.
So I'm getting my position back.
Well, you're getting a position, whatever position she has at whatever pay it is.
It'll be at $13 a dollar.
Whatever. Yes. So she'll give, she'll have to give it.
I was going to lose it completely, not give up.
If she has an open position, because if she didn't have one, then you would lose her position. You were ready to fight, Commissioner? Juan, you were ready to fight?
Well, I was going to get a position, but I'm going to do that.
Do I have a motion on the table?
Motion to table.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Regarding that position? Mr. Garcia, I'm in a re, open discussion for 3.21. Second by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Mr. Perena, you're on the hot seat.
Mr. Perena, when we do the transaction, which will be October the 1st.
10th.
Okay? Don't forget to put my position back. Okay?
That would be Mr. Ortiz's.
Who?
Mr. Ortiz's.
No, because if I'm going to lose it, then he's going to take it up.
It'll be in the budget.
The budget? So I don't want to lose it.
It'll be in the budget.
He's the one that takes the positions away and doesn't let us know.
Anything else? No further action, Mr. Garcia. 3.22, Discussion on Appropriate Action Quarterly Report from Sanitation Department Precinct 4.
Good morning.
Do you have that report, Ms. Mirana? Questions of Ms. Mirana?
I have a question, dear.
Go ahead.
Ms. Mirana, is there a place here, and if you can tell me, accounts are active?
We have a total of 571 active accounts. 547 of them are quarterly billing, and 24 of those are the monthly billing. are the monthly billing.
Question?
Ms. Miranda, the total expenditures is what? Cause you, uh, you got, is it fifty thousand or, or fifty thousand plus all that in there on the bottom?
I forgot.
On the second page.
On page two, the expenses.
So the bottom, the very bottom lines will be used so far.
So I guess his question is for operating, you don't have a grand total of all the expenses, you just have per line item. So like you have operating expenses for supplies, postage, telephone.
So on the top, it shows the original budget, at the way bottom, it shows the total used per, for, for this fiscal year.
So she doesn't have a total amount, but like, let's say for instance, on operating, the original budget was four thousand, and as of September, well, this one says July.
July.
It's four, she's spent four thousand seven hundred and ten. So she's doing it by columns.
But we're still ahead of, uh, their, of the expenditures.
Yes. Like in terms, in terms of, just to clarify, in terms of expenditure, expenditures to revenues, you are well above in revenues as you are to expenditures.
We were projected to bring in two hundred and thirty-eight, two hundred and forty thousand dollars for over three hundred and seven thousand dollars in revenues.
Who much commission?
Three hundred and seven. We're projected to bring in two hundred and thirty-nine...
It's on the first page, Commissioner Urenda. Did we look at the first page?
Oh, yeah. That's what you predict.
No, that's what we brought in anyways. Yeah, that's what we brought in so far. As of the ending of July, because we haven't closed August yet.
We're still, uh, do you think tipping fees?
Tipping fees, no. The last time we used tipping fees was back in May.
Ms. Miranda, I know you're under the, uh, commissioner, but, but are there any plans of letting the, or are we letting the air conditioning vehicles stop there? Not yet?
I don't have any, so it's more than that, too.
Other questions?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. All in.
Judge, we got in, we received the new trash trucks, the two new trash trucks for sanitation departments. Not any, but we'll see, we need, we have three trucks that run every day, so we're trying to get all three, but we got two, so that would help a lot.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
Good job.
Thank you, Ms. Miranda.
Four point one, discussion and appropriate action, Joe Status Report. Do you have a report, Ms. Montes?
Two more, Commissioner.
Judge.
Ms. Montes, on the US Marshal inmates, when you have total costs, is that the cost that it's costing them to, for us to house them, or how much they're paying us?
How much they're paying us.
Okay. Can you change where it says total cost for your next report, to put total revenue?
Yes, ma'am.
So it won't look to the public like that we're having to pay that amount to house US Marshals?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Do I have to spare enough money to house more or less than you did?
Forty. We could house forty-eight, but right now I have a lot of bench warrants, so we have a lot of states at this moment, so I can't have another dorm open.
So on those bench warrants, are those predominates in our district court?
Yes, ma'am.
So we need to talk to Mr. Sedna then?
Yes.
To get rid of those, because they're taking up space for the marshals, correct?
Correct.
How many bench warrants do you think you have for the, for the state?
I believe there were seven, if I'm not mistaken. I need to check on it.
So the marshals have brought in close to a million in the, this way.
Other questions on Ms. Montes?
Is everything up and running? Is everything up and running for the Joe?
We have the kitchen air conditioner, uh, uh, the air conditioner went out, but already fixed it already. It takes two days to get the part, but it's been already going on.
Do we have anybody from the state who is, uh, is the illegal?
We have four right now, the OLSs.
Judge, the last time I asked, can we get money from the, uh, prosecutors who paid for them?
To pay for who?
For the ones that are not, for the ones that are under the illegal, uh, for the carriers, for the carrying home.
For the smugglers? To get paid, to, for who to pay us?
If we can get us, the, uh, district attorney will pay for them.
No.
Cause even though we're getting that OLS star, we don't, we still have to...
Well, operation OLS star goes towards the overtime for the...
That's what I'm saying.
Janers enough to actually house the inmates.
That's what I'm saying, actually, we're, that county's the one that's threatening the people to pay them, and doctors and whatever.
We are.
Can we pay them? So how come everybody benefits except the county on, on the inmates?
But there is no line item right now to pay for.
With the judge's permission, all over there in Eston, that we house them, and then we gotta pay for them.
But the DA's office gets their budget from us and from each county.
And we could dress that to the OLS people before, or mayors.
Other questions?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Noguera. Maybe we can make a trip to Austin, Commissioner, and speak to the governor's office?
Cause I mean, everybody benefits except the county, the county's gotta pick whoever.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Montes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Five point one, discussion and appropriate action, just budget adjustment number ninety-five for the IT department. I have a motion, a draw, a motion on the floor. Motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? I have one abstention. Commissioner Noguera. Five point two, discussion and appropriate action budget adjustment number ninety-one for the three hundred and sixty-fifth district courtroom. I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Second by Commissioner Noguera. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Clean docket. In the general fund, it's two million, four hundred and eighty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars and ninety cents. Dimon County grant, a hundred and thirty-one thousand, one dollar and seventy-six cents. Dimon County golf course, ten thousand, three hundred and twenty-two and fifty-three cents. Courthouse security, three thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy-five cents. Records management, county clerk, four thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars and thirteen cents. Utilities, forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty-two cents. Rodeo Arena, a dollar ninety-one. Stone Garden, thirty-two thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars and thirteen cents. Local border security sheriff, thirty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-four. Operation OLS star program, twenty-twenty-two, four thousand, five dollars and sixteen cents. CTV Techs dot infrastructure fund, one million, five hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. Dimon County payroll, four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and two dollars and seventy cents. CDBG colonial fund, three hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. Tax note series, twenty-twenty-three, thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty. COs twenty-twenty, one hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-four and ninety-one cents. COs twenty-twenty-one, sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety-four cents. COs twenty-twenty-two, five hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. For the grand total, five million, nine hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and eight cents. All right, give me a second, I'm looking. I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. I will entertain a motion to recess and adjourn the regular meeting. Motion by Commissioner Noguera, I have a second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. The meeting, excuse me, the time is eleven oh eight, Mr. Garcia, and I'm calling the public facilities meeting to order. I let the record reflect that all parties are still present from the regular meeting, which is to include all commissioners and county judge. One point three, approval of minutes of special meeting, August sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, and regular meeting, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Subject, any corrections or...
Subject, any, no corrections, Commissioner Noguera, motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Two point one, discussion and appropriate action, new business.
Judge.
Yes, sir.
The men have been working on, uh, the air conditioners, and we got a call the other day about one going down, and right away they'll re-call. So I explained it to Mr. Pereda and gave, gave information, so I don't know, like I told him, I don't know if he's supposed to report to you or not, but I don't think so, but they always call to see what we're doing, they will not take care of it or not, you know, as soon as we find out, but no, they, see, the problem is that they're telling the men there, and they're not seeing, they're not letting this, uh, flow, no? So we don't know until two or three days later, yeah, yeah, give us a call, take emails or whatever, so we can take care of it. But I don't know if it's a purpose or what, but we find out two or three days later that something's broken there.
So you want them to call you directly? So I can make that up?
Mine is just that, uh, they called the Rio and, I don't know, some kind of a company that they're working for, and so... Do you have somebody there, Commissioner, that deals diversity with you, who come from? Oh, that was directly with the agents, you know, they're supposed to call, uh, their girl, call, uh, me, but they never do. And then I find out that they're, uh, they're down. Girl's the one that gets the majority of the head, they get after her and, I don't know, to call me, so that's the only problem we have.
Anything else, Commissioner?
Also on the... Your Rio were, we were gonna start, so it's raining, but we'll take the rain, we can do the payment later, so it won't be a problem.
Where are we at in the status of the roof?
We've already contacted the company, and they're working on getting it mobilized and everything, because they've got it, ordered the material, and it should be...
Cause I know that the manager advised me this weekend that they had a bunch of issues on the daughter, general, family daughter side.
Yeah, and that's why I told them there's an urgency to be getting, that it was urgent, it would get there.
Have they come to inspect it? Have they come to inspect the roof?
They have already done it, yes. Oh, who? They've already come in and inspected it before we got the post. So now what they're, they're coming in, they've gotta take off, everything off, and then they will put the material on. But they gotta come in and clean it. But they wanted, or, they've already ordered the material, so they can do that. But I will get a status, I will talk to them today personally, and try to see if we can do that.
Also, Judge, uh, I was gonna ask you in the court if, uh, that report on the parks of Sagado or this and all of this, can we put it on this one, or we have to go separate? In one Sagado, there's always something going on, or it's putting light, we put up, we, the person put up for lights, but they're requesting more, so I don't know, are you wanting to address that whenever we buy something for Sagado? Are you wanting to handle it?
You put it through the appeal system, I mean, we can just, and it'll come out on the clean docket?
Okay.
I think if it's something that's major, then we should talk about it. There's no action. Three point one, clean docket for public safety, four thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars and fifty-four cents. Is there any questions?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Urenda.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Noguera. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. I entertain a motion to recess and adjourn.
Mm-hmm.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Second. By Commissioner Noguera. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries, meeting has ended, any letter fourteen, Mr. Person.